My. There's the recording or officially being recorded. My co-host, co-moderator LaRae is on. We're just gonna hang out for about a minute or two and then we will begin the formal goodness of welcoming everyone. LaRae, how you feeling today?
I am enjoying the sun that is out now, knowing that started off with a little gloom, but I was able to get the little fella in the school without any disruptions and that's always, always a good start to my life. How are you feeling?
Good, same. I'm feeling good. I think we are, are we in May Gray of LA season? Is that where we're at? That's time of year, May Gray, June Gloom. Thankful for a little bit of the sun peeking out as well. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here. Alright, so we're up to forty-four, forty-five folks. Let's jump in and do this. We want to honor everyone's time, so. Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. Today, we'll be hearing from the three leading candidates who are competing to be the next LA County Supervisor for District Three. This is a seat that's been held by Supervisor Sheila Kewell since 2014, and this race is so important to SCAM members and our partners because the seat has the role of overseeing a budget worth of billions of dollars that impacts affordable housing, social services, public health, and homelessness funding. And my colleague LaRae is gonna round us out as well. Think we're having a little bit of camera challenges. Alright, well, I am gonna round us out through this, and then when LaRae hops back on. Just wanted to say that we're co-moderating today. I'm the Director of Racial Equity and Homelessness for Social Justice Partners. We focus deeply on shifting the culture of organizations and workforces to really center racial equity and justice. I'm so excited. LaRae and I have promised we'll be on screen together today when she hops back on. Many of you know that LaRae is an advocate with lived experience. She's the co-founder of Reframing Homeless Solutions and the Housing Justice LA Podcast. And yes, there you are. LaRae, I was just doing like self-intro, but please tell, please feel free to introduce yourself and then we'll jump in.
Oh, I'm so glad to be back and I heard that Mercury is doing some stuff. So I'm so glad to be with Kelly Poole, who I know will be able to hold it down in case it zooms me back into the vortex. In the meantime, I'm so grateful to be here. Thank you, SCAM, for hosting this conversation where Kelly and I will be your moderators, will work through a series of important focused questions around affordable housing and homelessness and getting to know the folks. I am a co-founder of Reframing Homeless Solutions and the Housing Justice LA Podcast. As a longtime resident of LA County, as an activist, as a mom, as senior manager of centering community and well-being with Full Frame Initiative, I bring my lived experience of living through homelessness and I bring my longtime advocacy into today's conversation. Kelly, I'm so grateful to be with you in this space as moderators and thank you to all of the candidates who are ready for this exciting conversation.
Yes, I agree, LaRae. I'm really glad to share the virtual stage with you. Just a couple of notes to the audience. Unfortunately, we won't have time for questions today from the audience, but we have a ton of good ones that we're gonna ask ourselves. So we're gonna ask candidates to make an opening statement followed by a set of general questions. We'll do a quick lightning round that all the candidates will get to respond to, and then we'll have one specific question posed for each candidate. Candidates will have about two minutes to respond to most questions. Alright, so we're gonna jump in. I'm gonna run through intros really quickly and then we'll bring our candidates on stage and get started. First, please welcome to the virtual stage Lindsey Horvath. In 2009, Lindsey was appointed to serve as a city council member for West Hollywood, and she returned to the council in 2015, was sworn in as mayor in April of 2015, and again in May of 2020. Lindsey, like many in the district, is a renter and runs her own marketing small business. So welcome virtually Lindsey. I'm gonna read the rest of the bios and then we'll let you all do opening statements. Next, please welcome to the virtual stage Bob Hertzberg. Bob Hertzberg is a state senator serving the 18th district. Bob was first elected to the State Assembly in 1996 and served as the 64th Speaker of the Assembly unanimously elected by both parties in 2000 and 2001. After his tenure as Speaker, he worked in the private sector as a clean energy entrepreneur, and in 2014, he returned to state government when he was again elected as a state senator. Welcome Senator Hertzberg. And we also will have joining us on the stage at some point Henry Stern. I want to read his intro and just know that he'll be hopping on shortly. Henry Stern is a state senator serving the 27th district. Henry has chaired the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee since 2018. As a former educator and environmental attorney, Henry received his undergraduate degree from Harvard University and earned his law degree at UC Berkeley. He was also staff counsel to Representative Henry Waxman during his chair of the House Energy and Commerce Committee. So that is who we are going to be joined with today. I'll pass back to you, LaRae.
Okay, so we're gonna start off hearing from Senator Hertzberg and we're just going to get two minutes of hearing from you all, your opening statements. We'd like to hear you share with us why you're running for this seat and how you will serve low-income and unhoused residents, both in District Three and countywide.
Okay. Yeah, I wanna, since I only have two minutes, you know, there has been just an extraordinary and exhausting amount of work dealing with this issue of affordability and homelessness and the kinds of issues that are informed by this discussion from your legislative visioning activities, the city, the county, all of these reports, McKinsey, Cal State LA, Rand Corporation. And so the question for me, and as I thought about coming here today, is how can I distill a little bit about who I am? You know, we all get in politics and we all say whatever the issue of the day is, but what is my history and my experience and what is my vision going forward? First, long before I was ever in government, I was working in South LA with Mark Reilly Thomas on Affordable Housing at Adams Congress. I also worked on Section Eight Housing in Compton, and I also served on the Board of Chinatown Service Center, dealing with housing issues critically important. When I got into government as Speaker, I made as my number one priority, my top priority, I won't say number one, because a whole bunch of stuff I worked on, but basically a billion dollars for affordable housing. If anybody recommend, recollects that who's around on this call, we ended up getting 580 million, the biggest investment in affordable housing ever. And then when I left government, I didn't walk away from my commitment. I went and joined Century Housing Board of Directors and was kept involved in the issue. So that gives you some sense about my long-term commitment. Now, you know, basically the question from when I look at is like, what are the couple of things I can share with you in these few seconds? Core elements, one, take responsibility. Everybody points fingers. If we as elected to take responsibility instead of passing it to others, it helps solve the problems. Two, think regionally. I formed the Speaker's Commission on Regionalism. You can't just be in one city and move people to another city and get serviced in another city. We have to look at the big picture. Three, streamlining on a pilot project in terms of what's happening with a number of these issues. Four, homeownership, homeownership, build equity, give people opportunity. Instead of making the landlords rich, make the owner rich. And lastly, big issue on the expiring covenants to make sure people aren't going to other homes, thousand other issues, but I just want to highlight a few.
Thank you. And we'll next hear from Lindsey Horvath, and then after Stern is able to join us, take it all.
Thank you so much for having me, and more importantly, thank you for the work that you're doing each and every day. My name is Lindsey Horvath. I currently serve as a council member, former mayor in the state of West Hollywood. I also served as President of California Contract Cities Association. With LA County during the time of crisis that has been COVID, and so I saw firsthand where the county met the moment in our local communities and our local neighborhoods on the ground and where it simply failed. My record of commitment in my community has been focused on creating affordable housing through inclusionary housing policies where we require at least 20% of housing development to be set aside for low, very low, and moderate income people. My experience has also been fighting for renters as a renter and rent stabilized housing myself. I think it's time we have that perspective on the Board of Supervisors and help protect renters by having people with lived experience at the table informing how we create our policies. I've worked to build diverse coalitions on all of the issues I've worked on in my community regionally, at the state and federal levels through the State and National League of Cities, also as President of Women in Municipal Government. So I've worked at all different levels, but the commitment is really at the local level where we're going to make a difference on these issues. When I was first appointed, I created a Renters Bill of Rights that was sent out to every resident and now is provided to every incoming resident into our community to level the playing field and make sure that renters know their rights and are able to access a support. I support a right to counsel. I support the kinds of services that we've had in partnership with organizations like Coalition for Economic Survival, which has helped to support our renters and make sure that they are protected when they're in disputes with their landlords. But we have to make sure that we are fighting hard each and every day for the people who are living in our communities now, not waiting for them to be able to afford housing, but make sure their quality of life is protected now, and that's what I intend to do.
Wonderful. And do we have Stern available to join us?
Not seeing that he's here yet, LaRae.
Okay.
To the next, and then we'll just have him pop in when he can.
Yeah.
Awesome. Alright, so our first question, it'll be a general question that'll go to both candidates. We'll start with you, Councilmember Horvath, and then Senator Hertzberg will pivot to you. So candidates often focus on what needs to change or what's wrong with the status quo. LA County certainly has a lot of room for progress on affordable housing and homelessness. As a supervisor, you would wield a great deal of power, but we know that one can improve the future without understanding the past. So could you name at least one action or policy that the county has done right to address homelessness? And secondly, what's one action or policy that has effectively supported affordable, affordable housing development that we should do more of? So we'll start with Councilmember Horvath.
Well, I know that the current supervisor who has endorsed me in this race has used discretionary funds in the district to help seed affordable housing, and I think that needs to be expanded countywide through an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that helps to build housing throughout the county. We need to, this is something I've done in my own community where we have created an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to help fund 100% affordable projects in some cases and partnering with nonprofit housing providers and creating permanent supportive housing for people right in our own community. This housing has been provided, that we've been able to create, has served unhoused residents, older adults, unlow-income, transgender youth. We've been able to target different populations in great need of housing through this work. And so I think that's something that has been done well in the district by our current supervisor that needs to be expanded. But I think we've also seen where LSA hasn't been able to deliver. It was created based on a court decision, not by legislative action, and so it was not empowered with the ability to respond in real time to, to the needs and concerns that we see on the ground. That's why my approach to, our community's approach to solving homelessness, where we have street teams in partnership with community-based organizations that employ people who have lived experience of being unhoused, outreach to people who are unhoused on the streets. That needs to be deployed countywide. We need to meet people where they are, help them understand the resources and support that are made available. And I know there are street teams that are currently employed by the county, but they're siloed in four different areas. They don't exchange information and checking off giving somebody a pamphlet counts as a success. I think we need to go much further than that. We need to provide transportation, directly connect people to housing and services, which we have done in my community with an 80% success rate year after year. So I have a plan and have done it in the past. I know how to do it in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember. Senator Hertzberg.
What do you mean? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think, is it, can you hear me now? Oh, it's unmute myself. Okay. The thing that they've done well is we've passed both a bond issue to be able to pay for housing that the people supported and a quarter cent sales tax, which folks have done. Those have been huge successes. I'm not gonna go out and beat up H and HHH in terms of what we've done in the region. I don't look back. I look forward to say, what's the vision look like going forward? And to me, the big issue, if you looked at the, I'm sure you have, the Blue Ribbon Commission on, on housing and homelessness, it talks about, you know, the city of LA and the county doing stuff themselves. We're 88 cities. We gotta think regionally. I've been working on this for so long. It's so important to look regionally. You go look at what one city says they're solving a problem. They contract with another area of the county. We have to think regionally like what I did in the Regionalism Commission. Second, we need a greater sense of urgency that needs to be informed by politicians taking responsibility. It's easy for everybody to blame and point fingers when you don't take and people aren't beating you up and you have real responsibility. You want, we already have some dedicated revenue streams, but we have to have more because it's all about cash. Ain't building nothing without money. Adaptive reuse has been, has been pretty good. There's gonna be some new stuff coming down from the state. According to the Rand Corporation, between 72,000 and 132,000 units can be taken care of. And lastly, although there's so many other issues, I could spend two days talking about this, but vacant land. The state went and did a plan. They identified 44,000 parcels and only 19 of which they could use. And only two in LA County, I gave them over 198 in the San Fernando Valley that my interns had worked on, radio silence. I'm sorry, there's a whole way that we at the state can acquire the vacant land for, and then release it to, to look to affordable housing developers for a buck a year, because one of the big problems in terms of cost is land. And if we bought it using Rena Golds, and I have already got an approach on this, we could dramatically increase the number of units that are affordable.
Alright, well, I'm jumping to some. Um, hmm. I'm jumping ahead on, on questions. Let me make sure that I'm in line with what we have before us. So, understanding that the homeless solutions have been more so designed by government and nonprofit, and we've been looking to push more and more and more for the voice of lived experience to be centered and a vital partner in the ways that we bring together solutions for homelessness. What we know is that the Committee for Greater LA says that we need to do a better job of valuing the wisdom of those with lived experience to inform these policies and the programs. Let's start with Senator Hertzberg. How do, how do you see us engaging the residents as partners? And how would you build up their leadership for long-term success and ensuring that policies are informed by their experience?
Anytime, am I old on this thing? Bear with me for a second. Still, I have to hit it twice to unmute it. Okay. Yeah, anytime you deal with difficult challenges, you have to include the people at the table. It's just essential because you can't know what it is. I served, and it's a crazy example, but it comes to mind and I'm thinking out loud on the Board of Pharmacy as a public member, right? So that you could help determine what those drug policies should be and the like. We do this all the time. So in terms of making sure that the voice of that, I'm hopeful in terms of leadership that folks basically graduate out of homelessness and, and are in a situation where they're much better off and we keep bringing new people in who have that lived experience to understand what is, why people are on the street, what's really going on. You know, we have these departments where we have people coming out of, out of jail, help Department of Health, Public Health does, Health does the people at the jail. Then we've got substance abuse, where we got public health, then we got mental health doing mental health, and then we've got, you know, it's just crazy. And, and people do have dual diagnosis. My former wife was the head of the Dual Diagnosis Commission years and years ago, and so it's just nuts. And so the bottom line is, starting from the bottom up, this is not a government at the federal or state level. It's, it's us working collectively in the county, figuring out together with the not-for-profits, they have a lot of value, together with the legislative delegation who's gonna pass these laws, to be able to figure out what are the unique things for LA County that we need to do to change the rules and make sure everybody's at the table. And I would suggest that that, that doesn't just include LA and the county. It includes other cities and includes stakeholders with lived experience. It's really important. You can't get to the core of any solution of anything that we work on, on social services or any other issues where we're so limited in that way. It is not just a government problem. It is a social problem, and it does require all of us. That's what I would say.
Thank you, and I'd love to hear, because I've heard you mention a few times about the ways in which lived experience has been essential in your perspective. So Councilmember Horvath, I would love to hear your perspective on how to build in that leadership for long, long-term success.
Absolutely, and I thank you for the question and thank you for your work. You know, a man named Jeffrey was living on the steps of my campaign office. He was there because he had a dog and couldn't find housing that accepted both him and his dog. It was through his experience that I connected him with social workers, with the services we provide in our city and, and also got him on the list and eventually into housing that's affordable in our own community because we developed it. But it's his lived experience that helped me see through his eyes where our system was serving people and where it was failing. That's the kind of experience that we need in forming our policies at all levels when we're talking about how the county serves this need. That's why in our community, we have street teams that employ people who themselves are formerly unhoused. So we give them a pipeline to, to a job, to using their lived experience to help better the future and to demonstrate to people who are currently unhoused that the path that we're helping people get on can actually work. We also need to have the experience of unhoused people on LSA. I think it needs to be completely reconfigured, that, that body needs to be, needs to include elected officials, service providers, but most importantly, people with lived experience to inform and speak to what services are being provided, where those services are being provided and to what end, and to talk about what is effective and what isn't. So we can triage and make adjustments in real time rather than waiting six months to a year to make changes. We're wasting time while people are losing time on our streets. We need, we need that lived experience to help us recalibrate and get to solutions much more quickly. That lived experience not only should exist in LSA, but will exist in terms of how I constitute my staff and, and should be how we constitute our staff at the county. We need to use that perspective to employ, to employ people who will help deliver the solutions that we need in LA County. That's how we develop leadership.
Great. Thanks so much to you both. So we're gonna do a lightning round. I'm gonna ask each of you three questions. I'll repeat them after. For each question, I'll invite you to simply say, agree, disagree, or you can say neither, agree nor disagree. So I'll start with Councilmember Horvath. I'll run through three questions. We'll let you respond, and then I'll have Senator Hertzberg respond to the same questions, and then we'll do 90 seconds for elaboration. So lots of details, but I'll, I'll get us through it. So Councilmember Horvath, do you agree, disagree, or neither? I support securing ongoing funding for the county's Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Yes.
I support an expansion of additional resources for the county's flexible housing subsidy pool.
Yes.
I support the board's recently approved motion to create a new county entity to coordinate and unify the homeless services provided by the multiple county departments as a new governance model recommended by the county's Blue Ribbon Commission.
Neither agree nor disagree.
Great.
Or both, I think it's both.
Great. Senator Hertzberg, again, you have the option to say agree, disagree, or you can say, say neither, agree nor disagree. I support securing ongoing funding for the county's Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Yes.
I support an expansion of additional resources for the county's flexible housing subsidy pool.
Absolutely, yes.
And I support the board's recently approved motion to create a new county entity to coordinate and unify homeless services by providing multiple county departments as a new governance model recommended by the county's Blue Ribbon Commission.
No, it was 38 reports, 39 months to expect to get a report back. You can't solve this problem in 39 months. I read every word of that report. No.
Great. So we'll start there. Senator Hertzberg, you have 90 minutes or 90 seconds to respond to any of the three questions.
Well, a couple of things. Yeah, I mean, on the, on the Blue Ribbon Commission, you know, I went through every one of the recommendations. It was 38 recommendations. On the one hand, they talk about urgency, and then they say, on the other hand, it's 39 months. Then they, then the city of LA doesn't participate, and that's okay. And then this local governments, there's no regional cooperation. Local governments are paying the taxes on the sales tax, and they're not getting the money. It just identified a bunch of the problems, but on my judgment, there was no real intelligence about where's the plan going forward. It's a typical political blah, blah, blah bureaucracy. Nobody wanted to get pissed off at anybody. No one wanted to hold the Board of Supervisors accountable. No one wanted to ask the hard questions, and I, I just was, I was so upset when I read that thing. I think that's really, really important. Number one is, you know, I do appreciate my opponent talking about the dogs because it's exactly what happened with me, and I in fact put in a whole bunch of money to be able to do that, you know, dealing with pets, because we know that up to, depending on reports, between 10 and 25% of people have pets, and it's just hugely important to their lives. I remember talking to people and a gentleman was telling me his cat saved his life. I mean, go in there. And the other thing I would share is, I'm not all about staff. I'm a person who shows up. I personally go. The other weekend, I was out at, at Barry Nidorf. I was out there at just myself, going out, talking to people, talking to the folks. I think you got a real essence of that, and you have to be a hands-on person. I think it's really, really important. And I wouldn't do anything with LSA, but blow it up because I'd change the structure and bring it to the elected officials.
Thank you, Senator Hertzberg. Councilmember Horvath, you have 90 seconds to respond.
Yes, I, I think there are good intentions that were informed by local governments who haven't been getting the support that they've needed from LA County, but I would agree that what, why I neither agree nor disagree is because it's about more planning and there isn't enough action in what was voted on. What we need is political courage. We need people who are on this board who are ready to take action and actually put into action what we know already works. And that's what I've been doing in my community, as I mentioned earlier, to about an 80% success rate year after year, leading by serving people, meeting people where they are on the streets and helping them understand what services and supports do, are already available. Admittedly, we don't have a 100% success rate. I think if anyone did or had that plan, we would be doing it already. The problem is that we do have examples of what works, but we're relying on an outdated, broken bureaucracy to deliver. What we need is to eliminate the bureaucracy that is getting in the way of actually delivering those services, invest resources directly into neighborhoods led by the lived experience of people in those neighborhoods in partnership with community-based organizations and nonprofits that help us meet people where they are and deliver services tailored neighborhood by neighborhood. That partnership with local government, which is part of the intention behind that motion, is something I absolutely support. I just don't think that we need more planning. I think we need a lot more action.
Alright, now we'll get into some directed questions. So we're starting with Senator Hertzberg. You recently proposed SB 1457, which would create a 25 billion general obligation bond to increase first-time homeownership opportunities. You stated, if I had my deruthers, there would never be another apartment. Everybody would own. But the average home price in California is now more than 800,000. In LA County is majority renters. Now, while you promoted the wealth creation of homeownership as priority, rents continue to rise rapidly and hurt the finances of most renters. Name at least one policy you will champion that will address rising rents and the needs of renters, not homeowners, in LA County.
Can I modify that a little bit? Because I'm trying to turn every renter into a homeowner. The reason why I made the statement is because after 10 years, all you have as a renter is the landlord's richer because the house and the building's worth more and you got higher rent. You, I want to create wealth for people. I want to make a bold statement to create wealth. Part of this plan has a huge element for affordability to it. In communities that don't have the infrastructure to be able to provide the money, the sidewalks and other things, it has that element in it in a very significant way. That's the reason I made the statement. Equity, build people wealth, get generational wealth. Rent is what it is, but everybody I talked to as a renter would rather be an owner so they could, don't have to worry about their, at the end of 10 years, if you have a fixed rate mortgage, what do you got? You got the same cost every year and you got equity. So I share you that. The other thing about helping people is number one, and Jesse Gabriel's been working on this in the legislature, and I've been supporting him on this, is to, is to basically make sure on these covenants that protect homes, that people don't fall off because those covenants are expiring. Critically important, because one of the problems is, you know, folks that are just falling off because they're, they're all of a sudden, they're in a protected home with a covenant, and then all of a sudden, it's not the case. So that's critically, critically important. Two, it's to be able to streamline the ability through things like I said earlier, surplus land. If you could create, we, the state could buy, we just spent 18.5 billion dollars in homelessness and housing. If we could buy the land from local government and we own it, we could expedite the production. we could expedite the production of that stuff over and above local control very fast. And all of a sudden, if a developer, affordable housing developer happens, what about it? Guess what? You can, your costs are dramatically down because anytime you build a house, there's four costs. There's land, there's the, you know, all the fees locally, there's the cost of labor, and there's the cost of materials. Reduce the land, which is your biggest number. You create affordability. That's what I'm trying to do.
Great. Thank you, Senator Hertzberg. Welcome, Senator Stern. It's good to see you. Thanks for being with us. We're going to give you two minutes to do your general introduction, and then I'll come back to you to ask a directed question. So we'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Kelly. I'm so sorry. I, I've been racing here, you know, 405 to the 10, just trying to get through LA, which is easier said than done. So it's an honor to be with the Southern California Association Nonprofit Housing and all the advocates and the people just trying to make life survivable in LA here. You know, I've been a renter in LA myself for, for as long as I can remember, and it's not easy. I used to rent an apartment in Canoga Park when I first moved back from DC as an environmental attorney and was paying about $800 a month to live on Alabama right near Basset. That same apartment now is $1,800 for about 600 square feet. This is a crisis, and it's of epic proportion. And frankly, we need more intentionality around affordable housing, specifically working with nonprofit developers like the members of your association to get that work done. Homelessness is number one in this race. And anyone who tells you that the mayor's race is going to decide the future of homelessness or that they're going to solve it doesn't fully understand the problem. We get that there's a lot of tension on LA City, but I hope that you can scrutinize this race for county board of supervisors because when it comes to financing affordable housing, to looking at rental covenants, whether it's mental health services or substance use treatment on the streets, all those services run right through LA County. 80% of Lhasa, which is a broken agency right now. And so I, I hope that we can make this board visible and accountable to people and that we can get more projects done. We just need more units, period, about 500,000. And I don't think we're going to get there just through supply-side economics or building more market rate. I think we've got to be focused in particular on the kinds of projects that you have been promoting. So anyway, we'll get into it today, but thanks for taking a minute.
Great. Thanks, Senator Stern. And yeah, a little bit on that same thread. In law school, you wrote a paper on land use and climate change. And you stated that the exclusive authority of cities and counties over planning and zoning undermines the state's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. You added that cities and counties make decisions based on insular local demands, which may or may not align with broader state goals. If you became a county supervisor, how would you address the political factors you identified in that paper that deter density and promotes sprawl? And as a supervisor, what will you do about autocentric development patterns that worsen the climate crisis as you've identified in your paper? You have two minutes.
That's a really good background research. I didn't know even, anyone even read my law school papers. But that's, that's my, that's my, in my life, is working on climate change, but not in a sort of ethereal way, but what climate injustice really looks like. And frankly, it looks like two and a half hour super commuter, you know, commutes that you promise, promise cheap living, and all you get out of sprawl is, is high gas prices and unaffordability. I do believe in infill, you know, and I've got some grief on the housing Twitter for not supporting SB 9 for that reason. They said, "Well, if you wrote this paper, how on earth could you not support SB 9 as well?" I don't believe we should be building deeper into our fire zones or into open space. But I do think that, you know, places like Canoga Park or like Vista Biona that we just finished construction on in Mar Vista area, those kinds of projects are just what we need. They're close to transit, they're close to services. And so I think we need more inclusionary zoning. I think we need to look at buying out restricted covenants and making sure people can stay in the housing they need. I think we need a right to counsel to keep people living in their homes. And I also think that from a planning perspective, the state does need to play a more central role. And I think you've seen that. I mean, I voted for a lot of tough bills in terms of HCD enforcement on Rena, looking at having SB 375 have some real teeth to it, streamlining transportation development so we can actually get light rail out through the valley along that orange line. So, you know, there's, there's those sort of symbolic votes that become the litmus test to say, if you were for SB 9 or against it, you know, decides your future. In my view, you know, that, that bill isn't the be-all, end-all. And I, I think we can both achieve climate justice and reduce pollution and at the same time, get people into more affordable infill housing at the same time. So that's the goal. Make good on my Law Review article.
Thank you. I'm going to now pivot to our direct question to our councilmember Lindsay Horvath. So in West Hollywood, it being a small city of 36,450 people, the district you're running to represent has more than 2 million constituents with a complex mix of housing needs. How are your stances on local control evolved to best meet the regional housing needs of a county of 10 million people? As supervisor, how would your policies be informed by collaborative partnerships with lived experience, nonprofit developers, and housing providers to expand affordable housing access?
Well, thank you for the question. We need to motivate communities to be doing more. And local control has actually allowed our community to always meet arena goals, to develop inclusionary housing policy and lead the way on, on innovative policies like that. And in fact, we did a study session with representatives from the county, staff from the county back in 2018 or 19, and they told us they needed to catch up to where we were, which was a nice pat on the back, but really disappointing to hear that they weren't doing something we had already proven in our community. And that's why I want to be in the county to bring to life those, those policies on a regional level. I do think that we have to work in partnership with local communities to make these housing options available and to make sure that we're creating housing that makes sense in different neighborhoods. We've seen how broad sweeping policies create unintended consequences. But we can partner and incentivize at the local level how we create housing, especially the housing that we need most, which is 100% affordable. We've done that in our community, and we've partnered with community-based nonprofit housing developers. Shout out to West Hollywood Community Housing Corp., EAH, the Actors Fund, and others. We've also worked with the county and the housing that they have in our community. And that experience of both working with the housing providers, working with the county itself, but working with the people who are in those buildings, who, who tell me what their quality of life is like, what responsiveness looks like when they need things in their buildings. All of that experience will inform how we create policies and how we meet people's needs, neighborhood by neighborhood, neighbor, community by community. I think that locally-led approach will make sure that we tailor the right kind of housing in neighborhoods and make sure that housing exists in all neighborhoods because we have to develop housing everywhere. We can't ship people out to one part of the county and say, "That's the solution." That doesn't work, and it's inequitable at best.
Thank you, Councilmember Horvath. Senator Stern, I want to come back to you for a set of lightning round questions. So after each statement, you can say agree, disagree, or you can say neither agree nor disagree. And then I'll give you 90 seconds to sort of expand. So the first question is, "I support securing ongoing funding for the county's Affordable Housing Trust Fund."
Agreed.
"I support an expansion of additional resources for the county's flexible housing subsidy pool."
Oh, yeah, it's going. Agreed. Yep.
"I support the board's recently approved motion to create a new county entity to coordinate and unify the homeless services provided by multiple county departments as a new governance model recommended by the county's Blue Ribbon Commission."
This is the 3-2 vote that just happened recently? I think that's what you're talking about. If so, I agree. I would have been with 3.
Great. You have 90 seconds if you want to elaborate on your responses to any of those.
But I get the last one. Did I get that right? Is that what you're talking about, the, the post-Blue Ribbon Commission vote on Lhasa restructuring? Is that what you were referring to?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. I, I mean, I, I think I caught the tail end of the councilmember's point about, you know, her maybe sticking with Supervisor Kewell's position on that and thinking it's just leading to more, more planning or sort of a skepticism about the Blue Ribbon Commission. I, I don't see that the majority vote there is just more planning for the sake of planning. People have got to step up and start spending down dollars, and we can't let housing first get in the way of care first. I mean, that's, that's the fundamental impasse that county's facing right now is the policy is care first, but we're putting services second behind housing. And so in my view, if Lhasa kind of got out of its own way and empowered both contract cities and the city of LA to be the eyes and ears on the ground, to get rapid mobile psychiatric care, to get housing navigators, to get the kind of units out on the street that we so desperately need. We've got 30 people countywide working for the home team at Department of Mental Health right now. If you want to get people to take Project Home Key and actually be able to stay in that home, and they're dealing with acute psychotic affective disorder or schizophrenia, there's no way they're going to be able to accept that housing unless they're stabilized. So I say abundant, relentless services alongside that housing first strategy. And that's what I want to see the future of Lhasa be.
Great. Thank you. So now we'll go back to a general question for each of the candidates. We'll start with Councilmember Horvath, and then I'll call on you all accordingly. "In March 2017, voters strongly approved Measure H, the increase to the county's sales tax to provide an ongoing revenue stream to prevent, excuse me, to fund services, rental subsidies, and housing. But Measure H will sunset after 10 years. What should supervisors do when Measure H expires? Will you support a policy that addresses the expiration of Measure H to continue funding services at the current level? And how can a nonprofit developer feel secure starting new permanent supportive housing projects if they're uncertain about rental assistance and service funding?" Councilmember Horvath.
Well, we need housing much quicker than a 10-year timeline. And I was very supportive of Measure H, part of the campaign to pass it, and very much out in front. And I'm grateful for the partnerships of many who are here today to make that measure successful. But we need to demonstrate to people in LA County where that money is being spent, or they're not going to renew it. And, and we can't continue to do what we're doing and expect that they're going to vote for it to be extended. So before we get to that point, I think we need to hold ourselves accountable. As I started to say earlier, we need to have weekly notice meetings of whatever the new version of Lhasa is with elected officials, the service providers, and people with lived experience. We should be, in those meetings, be showing where Measure H dollars are spent on a weekly basis, which neighborhoods, which kinds of services, and to what outcomes. We will hear from people with lived experience, you know, of course, how those dollars impacted their lives. And then we can triage in real time where we're spending money because this is a urgent crisis now. If we're waiting 10 years to hope that people are going to renew this measure then, and we haven't done anything or haven't demonstrated in a meaningful way how we've spent those dollars, I, I can't say that anyone should support that. We need to make sure that the, the resources are being invested in ways that people see a change in their community. And the most important way we can do that is by investing them in community-based organizations and local nonprofit housing to make sure that people are seeing in their own community what that change has brought. And so should we do that when we're, when we're showing that we're accountable, when we're showing where those dollars are being spent, when we're showing how we've used those dollars successfully? Then I think all the residents of LA County would be supportive of us renewing that. But until we get there, I think we're going to have trouble. And so that's what I would commit to do, is making sure that we're prepared by being transparent and accountable.
Thank you, Councilmember Horvath. Senator Hertzberg. I think you're still on mute, Senator.
One of the most important things you just mentioned just now was the issue of having a secure revenue stream going forward. Anytime you're involved in any of these issues, you have to have a dedicated revenue stream where you know you're going to get the money. If you take a look at the budget this year, property taxes are up 5.3%. 5.3%. I would use as much of that money as possible because I don't believe the voters will vote to, to extend that, that sales tax. I don't believe it's going to happen. I don't think we're going to be able to hold that fast. I think people have lost confidence. And again, I'm not looking to point fingers or whatever. I just want to fix it going forward. And fixing it going forward means that you've got to give people confidence that we're dealing with the mental health issues, the substance abuse issues, housing issues, all of this stuff. And so I, I see on the horizon, let alone the $18.5 billion of the next couple of years the state's going to provide, but really to dedicate a big piece of that increase in property tax. Because it's very hard that the property tax, you've got the whole appeal process to have your property tax reduced. So I think that's the biggest part because, because on the one hand, we've got to make sure that we build. But on the flip side is, we have to make sure we've got a reliable system that will actually allow us to continue to build. So I, I don't think you're going to see a lot of support because it's coming up in the next couple of years in terms of this coming on the ballot. And I think it would be a mistake to even argue for it. But I do think the idea of dedicating that, that surplus in property tax would be a wise use of this money. Really wise. That's my thinking.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Stern.
When it comes to the, the future beyond H, it's, it's tough to sort of think beyond the, the current crisis before us. I think that we've got to earn the trust of LA County that we're going to be able to spend their money wisely and drive costs down and directly address affordability. And I think if we can make the case, we can go back to voters and ask them for more. But I'm reticent to, to ask for that until we have truly a county-wide solution. I saw some chatter in the chat saying, "Are you committed to 100% affordable housing, not just in Venice or Mar Vista, but throughout this, this county?" And the answer is yes. I want to see 100% affordable housing in Agoura or in Calabasas. These kinds of projects should be pursued throughout this district. And, you know, what's not, what's missing right now is the revenue stream that rides alongside it for both healthcare and for mental health services. Because the most vulnerable people that we're trying to house, oftentimes, they're not accompanied by the supportive services. People want to talk about permanent supportive housing, but unless you've got the services alongside it, it doesn't work. So I'd like to see us concurrently reform both Mental Health Services Act, Prop 63, and actually look at Medi-Cal reform to pursue what I call more housing that heals. I think that's an incredibly successful program. And marry that to the ongoing revenue stream for sort of that general affordable housing financing. I think that doing that kind of paired work where you're really utilizing the service arm of the county and matching that with financing that developers are going to actually be able to pencil out. To me, that's the only way to, to make it happen. But yeah, it has to be ongoing and continued. We can't, we can't afford a pause. And if people are trying to do, you know, major capital outlays on multi, you know, 10, 20, 30, 40, $50 million projects, you know, there can't be some cliff. So it's a, it has to be extended some.
Right. Thank you. Going on to our next general question. There are so many county-wide issues to address poverty and racial equity. In 2020, the board adopted a motion that establishes an anti-racist LA County policy agenda. How will you strengthen the LA County Anti-Racism, Diversity, and Inclusion Initiative? What are your specific policies that you'll advance so that the racial gaps in housing outcomes are better addressed? And I'm going to start with Councilmember Horvath. And then we'll go to Hertzberg and then to Stern.
Well, we need to focus on what continue to be lingering impacts of redlining in our communities. In my city, we have partnered with, with the region and with Metro to create transportation options that connect communities that were intentionally divided by redlining. But we have to do more than that. I think the Crunchon Northern Extension is a critical project. But we also have to look at how housing covenants, and, and one of my colleagues on the council talked about, you know, about this when he was purchasing his own home and what he saw, the racism that he saw in his own contracts. We need to really acknowledge that that's happened and then, and then intentionally move forward to make sure that there are homeownership opportunities for people of color, that we are creating policies that are rooted in equity and that we're understanding what some of those challenges have been. In my own community, we created a social justice task force where people who represent these issues have been able to inform our policies. And I think that's, that's how I would move forward. It's clear from those of us who are here today, from the candidates who are running for this seat, that none of us have the lived experience of people of color. So we need to be thoughtful, intentional, and listen to what it is leaders have missed. I know that Supervisor Mitchell has been a strong leader in terms of collecting the data and quantifying what these gaps have been in terms of health services. And we need to do the same in housing so that way we can then create policies that understand what, what were the inequities of our past. that understand what were the inequities of our past, so we don't repeat the same mistakes in our future. But we also have to make sure that we are employing people in positions to make sure that the policies that are enacted by the county, that they actually are implemented equitably in housing. And I think that's also how we help to solve this problem.
Wonderful. Now here from Senator Hertzberg.
Hi, everybody. You know, I think these jobs are about character. And I think your character is determined. You guys have a couple of minutes to listen to this stuff. It's a bunch of soundbites. It's a bunch of whatever stuff is polled today, right? And to me, you look back to someone, who they are, and what they're, we talk about lived experience. Look at the candidates in front of you and what their lived experiences are, and then what their vision is going forward. My political career started in South Los Angeles as a driver for Merv Dymally. I worked for Julian Dixon, Leon Ralph, Bill Green, Maxine Waters, all those two folks. Well, I learned about community, man, in a big way. I understand that it's different, but I made those choices as a human being. I then went to the East Side and worked on the East LA for Gloria Molina, Hilda Solis, and Mike Cranderson, tons of people, and Antonio Ramon Pedro Villarregosa, and everybody else along the way, building relationships that then informed my ability to think and have relationships as we look to countywide solutions. I've been to every corner of the county, worked in almost every corner of the county. I'm not just someone who's one little piece of that pie. It's really important to do that. And so what you do is, whether it's appointing people in really big positions, it's bringing them to the table on every big decision, it's making sure department heads are part of there, it's integrating government at every level with voices, but that come from that level of, we talk about lived experience, lived experience. Why did I say I was in Chinatown Service Center? I was the only non-Asian person on that board back when, you know? It was the right thing to do, and you learn and you grow. And it informs your soul in who you are and what kind of public servant you're going to be. And so I think that, yeah, we can talk about commissions and committees and all that stuff. But how do you interrelate with people? I just got endorsed by this Sentinel, right? And one of the supervisors was mad. How did that happen? Because I've been in the community since 1973, helping, and they know my history. It's really important in terms of relationships are everything.
And Senator Stern.
I do agree that relationships are everything, and it matters who you are and where you come from. I haven't been doing this as long as my colleague. He's been doing it for 40 years, and I'm 40 years old. So I recognize that, you know, I haven't been a public official as long. But I hope that my disgust with the legacy of racism in Los Angeles, as it reveals itself in our housing policies, sparks a new generation of people who want to see something better. Article 34 is still on the books. You can't get low-income housing approved in cities without voter approval. That's standing in the way. Section 8 discrimination still occurring, although I worked with Supervisor Mitchell to end all that with SB 329. You know, when you look at just the way freeway construction even occurs and the way communities are divided, those legacies of racism exist all over this city and all over this county. And, you know, if someone's actually going to stand up and make NIMBYism a thing of the past, we've actually got to recognize that, you know, there are good people in communities everywhere. And I think that's true in a lot of the unincorporated parts of this county, too. You know, I spend time not just living towards, or, you know, in Agoura and Calabasas and the mountains, where folks also want to make a difference, and they also do want to build affordable housing, and they do want to change the tide. But I think you've got to be fluent enough in all parts of this district to effectuate that change, but also generationally not seeing the legacies of the past as the architecture of the future. I think we've got to think of things anew. And so, you know, that's my commitment to you all if I'm elected.
Thanks to each of you. A general question you'll each have two minutes to respond to. The Board of Supervisors serves as the Board of Commissioners for the Los Angeles County Development Authority, LACDA. And the Board helps set policy for the agency. Given that none of you have served in a county position before, please describe your understanding of the county's Public Housing Authority, LACDA, and its role in solving the housing crisis. Senator Hertzberg, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I have not served at the county, but I have been deeply involved. I spent many, many years on a lot of county issues as Gloria Molina's lawyer. I also served in the selection committee to select county council. I served in the Productivity and Quality Commission. And my brother served for Gloria's staff, I think, for 20-some years and had been deeply involved in a lot of county issues. Secondly, I would suggest that my role as Chair of the Local Government Committee, my role in the government at the state, the county is a subdivision of the state. And so, and people want to point the finger at the state and this and that, whatever. But the reality is, that's the system. And so much of what we do in terms of, like, just funding, but so many laws that we write. I spent four years writing the Lafco Law, which relates to development, spheres of influence. Four years, never made an article. Why? Because it's understanding the sphere of influence, understanding the relationship with the 526 subdivisions of government in LA County in some deep, meaningful level. Understanding all of that becomes extremely important in terms of the larger issue in terms of whether it's development, how it works, obviously, the areas of the county that are unincorporated, the role that we have there, which is pretty significant in terms of that stuff. I would also suggest that, you know, I've been a lawyer for a long time. And by the way, I didn't serve in government that long. I came in, I served, I was 42 when I first got elected. All the stuff I talked to you about, I worked for free as some community activist to help the community. I wasn't a government official. I came in for six years, I left and worked on renewable energy. I came back for a few years, because I'm trying to be a public servant in ways that are important. And so all I can tell you is, you know, I've been a lawyer during the zillion developments. I did a lot of the developments I talked to you about in the introduction in terms of SX8 housing, in terms of the tax credits and how that stuff works, and have a pretty good knowledge. And I've written a book on real estate law as well that deals with many of the issues. Again, reality is complex, and it's hard to answer something in an intelligent way in two minutes beyond just the platitudes.
Thank you, Senator. Councilmember Horvath, we'd love to hear from you.
So this directs affordable housing development. It informs community development and also vendors and contracting and in creating that housing and providing those services. And that actually speaks to your previous question, you know, how can we help inform, or how can we help reverse discrimination, I think, and impact discrimination? Someone said in the chat, it really deals with implementation. It's not just about passing policies, but what we actually do with them. And I think this body can have an important role to play in that effort, making sure that we are contracting with vendors who reflect the diversity of the county, that we're giving employment opportunities, and that the vendors that we're working with are helping to create the housing for people who need it most, that we are working and creating more opportunities to partner with affordable housing developers and exploring how we can incentivize the development of affordable housing with supportive services, which is the housing that we need most. We also, this body will also work to identify the needs in community, you know, and help serve people who need low-income housing, understand what services need to be provided, invest in youth programs. This is all work that I have done in partnership with the county at the local level, whether it's been working with Emilio in the Housing Department on buildings in our own community, where I learned what, how the county works on the ground in the buildings that they serve and in the buildings that they're responsible for. We saw in a time of crisis, there was a terrible storm that started pouring down rain, and older adults had to be evacuated in the middle of the night. And, you know, Emilio showed up, I showed up, and we were on the ground to help people in a very difficult time of emergency. It's that showing up and working in partnership on these issues and understanding how implementation works that needs to inform how we serve on this body. And I have that experience.
Thank you, Councilmember. Senator Stern, we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up LACDA, because they're such a crucial function throughout the county, whether it's on rental assistance, whether it's on financing, rapid rehousing, these emergency solutions grants they've got, helping veterans in the community. These are the kinds of things that, for me, it's not just policy, it's personal. I had a, my father-in-law is a 94-year-old immigrant, all-cost survivor, and was constructively evicted from his rent-controlled apartment in the middle of the city of LA. He would be on the street if not for us. And when we looked at the site base, the wait lists that are out there, we know that program's been extended by LACDA. But frankly, unless you're building the kind of housing that Santa Monica has done for seniors, which we just need more of, there was no real good option out there. And so this pressure, especially without Ellis Act reform on seniors who are stuck, is going to only increase more. So I'd love to see us amp up a number of those programs, whether it's getting our rent relief extended. I don't think the $2.7 billion we appropriated there is enough. I think we should keep going. And I think that, you know, when you look at your last question on the legacies of racism in this town, look at the populations themselves on the street. I mean, 8% of LA is in the black community of black men. 34% of the people on the street are in that same community. You're talking about such a disproportionate impact. And you have to recognize that at bottom, the financing has to be fueled by justice. So preventing that kind of gentrification and displacement, to me, is a central function of LACDA. And I just, I'd like to see it empowered more, funded more, and really tailored to some of those contract cities, too.
Wonderful. Now we're going to move into closing statements. And when we consider the polling, we see that it's a consistent pattern showing that voters have little to no trust in our institutions or politicians to deliver solutions that center those that are most proximate to the harms of inequitable policies. In your closing statement, we want to hear, why should voters trust you to improve their lives in LA County? Please share your specific philosophy and approach to the county governance. Will you prioritize Local District 3 issues or what is best regionally for the county at large? Oh, and we'll start with Councilmember Horvath.
Thank you very much, and thank you for hosting this today. It's been a great conversation, and I think we're centered on issues that people are talking about and top of mind, no matter where you are in the district and the county. I, yes, right now, the county has a policy of the divide-by-five model when it comes to the budget. But we need to make sure that we're investing resources in the places where they're needed most, where they're needed most. This, the county is the social safety net for all of us at the local level. And so it's intended to serve those who need the most help. That's who we need to center in the work that we're doing. I have work to do that in my own community by building coalitions that reflect the diversity of my community, the regions that I've served. And that's what I have continued to do, not only on this campaign, because, you know, I want to win, but because it's how I intend to serve. And we need to have that informed experience, both in our, in the boardroom with us and out in the community in partnership to deliver those services. We heard today why Senator Hertzberg is endorsed by the Apartment Association. We've heard why, you know, why we need a different kind of leadership. My lived experience as a renter in rent-stabilized housing, my service as a local elected official for 15 years, where I've had to face difficult choices, building housing at times where people were angry and upset because it was the right thing to do, because people are in need. I've had to make those tough decisions and then face people the next day. And I've done it because it's the right thing to do. We're in a crisis, and we need people who have the courage of their convictions to stand up and do this work at the county board. And that's why I've shown up with a sense of urgency on these issues. We need people who want to fight for the kind of change for people like me who are looking to afford a future here in Los Angeles, who don't ever see homeownership as a possibility, who are living with the burden of student debt and hoping that the cost of living can change. We shouldn't just live with hope, we should live with action. And that's what I'm prepared to deliver as your next county supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear next from Senator Stern.
Thanks again for hosting today. And I just have to tell you, just staying in the chat is a master's thesis on nonprofit affordable housing. So the brain power in this association has to be put to work and actually brought into county governance. That's what I'd say. That co-governance model is how I have been trying to do my work for the last six years in public office and throughout my life, you know, not trying to be above it. I think there's a dangerous tendency at the LA County Board of Supervisors, especially when you only have five people for about $11 million, to wall it off and to put up the castle gates and only draw down the drawbridge when you want people to have access. I think we need to radically reimagine how LA County operates and take the heat and even have meetings differently. I mean, just to build the trust that you know I'm willing to face tough answers and have people hold my feet to the fire, you know, that's how I've been doing my work, is not chasing the ribbon cuttings, but showing up. And when it's a matter of a city council person taking heat for putting up a good nonprofit housing project that the people in the community are afraid of, I think the county supervisor needs to be right there with them. Mitch O'Farrell shouldn't have been on his own, nor should Bob Blumenfeld, nor should Mike Bonn and when they're out there doing this work. And when you're, when you're talking about, you know, taking over the 818 Hotel on Ventura Boulevard, or whether you're out in Echo Park trying to deal with that, county needs to show up, and they haven't been. And, you know, I know part of the premise of your question was like, are you going to focus on three? Are you going to focus on the rest of it? We're going to rise and fall together. You can't silo it off. So to say that, you know, my city did 80%, you know, got 80% of homeless people off the street, and yet there's 100% increase, and then you've got on all sides of your city, homelessness crisis is not something to take credit or a victory for. So to me, we're all in it together. And yeah, I just appreciate your time and your enthusiasm here.
Wonderful. And now let's hear from Senator Hertzberg.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, thanks for that. And let me start with the premise of your question about confidence. And I think you're right. The idea is anybody who's served in government, throw them out. They haven't been successful. You can all claim what we want. Politicians, talk, 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 talk. And who's going to actually get something done? That's the most important question. I agree with the council member when she says, don't divide by five. She's 100% correct. But that goes to the issue of regionalism. It goes to the issue of looking at the big picture. It goes to the issue, again, credibility. I've been working on this forever at 100 levels, trying to break those things down. And what I would suggest to you is that there's kind of two elements. One, what's your track record? Are you real? Can you really get something done? And two, what's your vision going forward? Because somebody who actually has some dynamic vision. And I would suggest, as Speaker of the Assembly, where I had to work for people from Fresno and Imperial County, and Democrats and Republicans, and the other House, and the governor, it's a whole different place than just being a member or being a member of a city council, whatever. It is so hard to pull that collaboration of everybody together to move in a direction, to get that $580 million for affordable housing that I was able to do, to do some of these big gigantic things that are so difficult to do. And I would suggest that that track record informs an ability. We all have the desire to be great politicians. We all want to deliver every problem being solved, the magic wand passing. The question is, who can actually make it happen? Who has the relationships? Who has the understanding and the skill of the process to get it done? And I would suggest it requires a series of things. And I would say that my deep experience in the community for many years as a volunteer, I would suggest my deep experience traveling globally, you know, on renewable energy, bringing the entrepreneurial spirit, and then being somebody who's come back to government. I dealt with bail reform. You know how much they beat that crap out of me on that? And people, you know, private investigators and this and that, I got in the game.
Thank you so much. Thank you to each of our candidates who took time out of their busy schedules to share their wisdom and vision for Los Angeles County. And thanks to everyone for joining us today. We hope that today's discussion was informative and that it'll help you make a decision about which candidate will best prioritize affordable housing and homelessness. Laura Ray, it was really fun to serve with you as today's moderator as well.
I agree. It's been a pleasure to spend some time with you, which is over in these Zoom spaces. And I look forward to being able to do that in person again soon. I want to also thank the listeners for taking the time to tune in and put all that also thank the listeners for taking the time to tune in and put all that really good insight into the chat. I want to also take a moment to remind everyone the importance of voting. So what we know is that June 7th is the election time. Battles have been mailed out, and I'm sure that if you're familiar, that you could get them mailed in sooner than June 7th. But please do get out and let your voice be heard. I do hope that this has been an informational session to help you make a decision that feels right for you, and that you will help us to continue to hold the fire to the flames and assure that our LA County is doing the very best that we can to make sure people are housed. Thank you again.